Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
I.
Reports, manager?
In your minutes, you'll see that I have a dietary manager position opening up in August. Melissa Pellet, who we took through the stalling, will be getting married and so she is moving. So we'll start advertising for that position in May or early June. Our accounts receivable, I've been working previously with Bruce on a case, went to district court, was, received a judgment. The title company is in fault and I'm working with the title company at this time to get our funds as there's a timing issue there that we had in and they missed and so let's see if we can't get our funds that we deserve banking. The board has made sure that I had proper coverage and I went to the bank and due to us having pledges with all of our funds being city owned, we are fully covered so we didn't feel at this time that we needed to move any other funds to any other banking at this time. Our new business is our annual prom event will be May 2nd at the facility. It's just a big event that we have for the residents so we'll be going forward with that Run of the Roses theme this year here in a couple of weeks. Any other questions? Thank you.
Police chief?
Do you have an additional report to what you provided for us?
No, this is it. It's another report here.
We have a legally issued the last meeting due to the approval from the January meeting to list the person's first and last name and make him off of the vehicle.
I contacted the league municipalities' legal department because I knew there was something out there and they informed me under state law that you do not release that. That's too much information.
Isn't it funny though, can we release it to the newspapers and put in the newspapers?
Who releases what to the newspapers?
Well, like the Anlo County News, the Norwalk Daily News, all that's in the newspapers for all those.
Court records, yes.
Okay.
But, but not personal information.
And you can't give it to us?
No.
We have a different opinion from the league. I'm not quite in your opinion that the league is going to offer us legal advice and blame you. They sent you a copy of the statute.
Correct.
Well, I'm not going to analyze this. I have ten seconds tonight.
Sure.
If you can look at it. It says records may be withheld from the public if the caption is contested. Well, are we the public or do we have, there's certainly nothing mandatory about maybe withheld from the public. This is if the public walks into the office and wants to see stuff. But I'm not going to pretend to analyze the whole situation. There's a statute received in two minutes. I mean, what she did was send out a copy of the statute. Good for her.
When was that? When did you?
Seventy-five.
When did you receive that, Bruce?
Thirteenth of last month.
So would you have had time to give that to Bruce in the interim to discuss that with him?
You know, it's not going to make any difference because my department's being micromanaged and I don't know what the difference is to release names of people that are under investigation. What they're talking about here is court records and public records. You know, what's next? You're going to want lists of names of people that we go out on domestic some? Or?
The point of the matter is, is we passed a motion in January.
The point of the matter is-
No, no, excuse me. You, I, can I speak, please? I'm a council member. Last month, we reviewed the minutes from January. We were all in agreement that this needed to be done. When we ask anybody else, city employees, to do something, they do it. They don't sass back. Last month-
Now I'm sassing back.
Last month, you said, "No, I'm not going to do it." That was blatantly disrespectful to Bob and myself. Blatantly disrespectful.
It's not disrespectful when there is a state law that states this information cannot be released.
And that is something that you could have given to Bruce back on the thirteenth to have him look at prior to this meeting.
Maybe withheld is different than cannot be released. You understand that, right?
Well, it also states that if it's under investigation, which it's a difference between going through court and becoming a court record and a court document compared to somebody calling in a complaint on something and you're investigating it. Now, if we take these people to court, yes, it's a public record once it goes through court. It can be released. But to scrutinize an individual because they're under investigation on something, that, my opinion is, and according to state law, it's an invasion of their privacy.
Bruce, we've asked Kurt to bring things. Before Kurt, we asked Raleigh to bring things. We've asked Mike to bring things and there wasn't any disagreement with them. They brought it.
Bring things, like, like what?
Bring additional documentation. Every time we've brought this up to you, you fought us on this.
Every time.
Yes, you have, every time.
Because my position is a little bit different than us going through a health board meeting and trying to get these properties cleaned up. When it comes to my job at my position, when somebody's under investigation on something, I can't run up and down the streets and release names because it just, it ruins everything.
What are you doing with properties?
Properties, yeah, it's a different story though.
This is a card. This is a card.
Because we have to understand who we're dealing with on the properties.
This is also a card. That's a property of an individual. The blatant disrespect that you showed us last month in providing us with this report is a slap in the face. You would have thought after the last two years with your raises that you would have done more to help us out as the city council when we've asked for it. I mean, if, if this can't be provided, once Bruce looks into it and it's something that can be provided, I will make a recommendation to have the mayor, I don't know what he can do, put you on leave, do something with your salary, something, but if you're not going to do your job, then there's an issue. Because this is just one of the many things that is happening in Plainview that's not getting done.
It's not getting done. Do you even read this?
Yes, I do.
How many unlicensed vehicles do we have this year that have been taken care of?
You know what? There was a council member-
How many?
There was a council member who brought this up month after month after month after month. He is no longer on here, but I would venture that he would disagree with this report. All I'm asking you is to do your job, do what we had asked in January and again advised you to do last month. If you had this on the thirteenth, there is no reason why you couldn't have given it to Bruce to have him look it over prior to today's meeting, prior to Courtney sending this out.
Mike, what day did we have the meeting?
Uh, last month.
To recollect, Mike, and I hand the information over to you guys.
Whatever was that, last week? I mean, was it before we sent, Monday, Tuesday, or?
Nope.
I mean, you're talking about after this is whatever you-
Council meeting was Tuesday, the twelfth.
No, the, had a meeting between the mayor, the city manager, and the city clerk and myself and this information was handed over to him.
Well, if this is something that we had made a motion on in January, that we requested in January and still hasn't been done and now it's April, that should have been something to, had given to our state attorney to have him review prior to this month's meeting. So we're not yet another month behind.
You know, it, it's not going to matter what I say or do. It's not going to matter. Because we absolutely-
All I want you to do is follow the motion that was made in January.
No, all you want, all you want me to do is just keep going on what you are demanding.
Chief, can we talk about this next month at executive session?
That would probably be a good idea.
Okay. Comes on to what Bruce can cipher out what that actually means. Is that possible, Bruce, or is there a lot of different interpretations or how does that work?
The chief will follow your instructions.
Well, sooner or later, yeah, he will, sooner or later.
Okay. We'll put it on the next month agenda at executive session, if that's all right.
I can't imagine why it would justify it.
The executive session.
Well, just sets it very easy.
We can put it on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda for next month.
And if Bruce, you find out that, that he can do, will you let him know right away so he has ample time to include that information in his report for next month?
I can certainly get an opinion out of it.
Great, thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions, sir? Thank you, chief. Susan, economic development?
Hi.
Hi, Susan. Hello. Courtney, did you get any of those bids by any chance today?
Nope.
Okay. On the building, we, we've asked for some more bids for this project. Kevin Hill came up and did a bid a couple of weeks ago or looked at the building and so did Craig Peters. Neither of them have submitted a bid for the council meeting, so I would move to table it again if you're okay with that. Sorry.
No, that's fine.
On our housing trust one, we have that investors meeting and the project is fully funded. We did find the 179 that we were looking for and we'll talk about that in one of the open hearings, so I'll just let that one go. Going to skip ahead to the Plainview Business Chamber. We had our spaghetti benefit fee for the shrines on Sunday night. We raised thirty-four oh three. We served two hundred and thirty-five people, so it was about fourteen seventy a plate. Believe that Amy was writing the check tonight and had Bruce sign it, so Josh will have it by tomorrow.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you for everyone coming out. That was, yeah, it was really nice.
Have Bruce take care of garbage. You had garbage duty, didn't you?
Yeah, I was there for cleanup. I got carried away all the cake.
Yeah, he shopped all the desserts. But there was a lot left over, so that was great. Our county leadership program, all of our UNL staff has been redirected to flood recovery and we're not really sure what they're doing exactly, but we know that every field rep is now gone. So the county commissioner had asked for this county by leadership program and I had worked on it a little bit with Justin, very familiar with Bronx counties. So I went ahead and finished it. I told the commissioner yet that yesterday. I'm just going to submit it to them and get it going. So we're done talking about it. On the YP summit that's coming up, so the day is Friday, June twenty-eighth. They did change the time a little bit. We're going to go from nine in the morning till four forty-five in the afternoon. Three educational breakout sessions during the day, networking lunch, and networking reception after. When we get a little bit closer to that, I'd really like to kind of have some people in Plainview support that. I'd like to have some of our businesses send, you know, our younger professionals to this event so they can get some education and meet some other people. It's going to be about twenty-five dollars a person. They are asking each community to sponsor a table. Table sponsors are going to be two hundred dollars, so that, that might be something to talk about later. I'll leave the CBA appointments, well, will we do that today since the mayor's not here?
Yeah, he talked to me about it.
Okay, I'll leave that for later. On the community building, we did get an exterior rendering. I think that was included with your packet.
I know last month it was.
Okay, perfect. Well, that was the interior, not the outside.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So some pretty good news we found out about that one. There is a grant, or not grant, I guess it's a program through the state of Nebraska, call it triple C, double F. They raised a threshold on that. Used to be for here, I think it was three fifty-
Three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five. Our threshold is now six hundred thousand. And we used it for the library and then they kind of put you on this, you can't ask for this again for the next amount of dollars on that list, and they've shortened that timeframe. So we are eligible again for this money. So we could look at six hundred thousand dollars from that program, three hundred seventy-five thousand in CDG. And I had a phone conversation with our Kiwet Foundation representative last week and they have changed their grant funding program. So what they're doing now is they're only interested in large projects with community benefit. They want to fund four to ten percent. I talked to them about the community building. I told them our rough estimate on the price was coming in about five point two million. They said they would be very interested in that project for five hundred thousand dollar grant. So significant amount of grant funding there that we could add to a capital campaign. So we're going to think about pulling the trigger on that one sooner rather than later. We've got the Mar, the April network meeting coming up here in Plainview. We've invited every city administrator, economic development group, and school administrator in from Yankton, South Dakota, all the way down to Madison and out towards the Nebraska Iowa where it should be a really good meeting, really good information. If you guys are interested in joining us, more than welcome to come. Lunch is provided. Gazelle AI, I had a meeting with PCD on Monday and they finally got to review the program. A quick half hour snapshot, usually that presentation is two and a half hours. I don't know, did they decide to pay for it in the end?
Yes, they did.
Okay. That gets us off the hook for two thousand. PCD will cover our three thousand dollars. It will include the PCD and Osmond. On the IRP, I talked to Mike about it, I talked to Courtney about it. We're kind of drawn where are we going to come up with a hundred thousand dollar match for this thing that we are awarded and Mike suggested a special meeting just so we can sit down and talk about, talk about it because I don't know what else to do with it.
Yeah, there, there needs to be, we need to have a discussion. I'm right in the middle of, you know, if we do a deal with FEMA and NEMA on any road construction, we just may not be in a position to spend money and I'm going to be very careful how I do that, especially when the auditor's coming up and I, I don't want to think that we have tons of money to throw around, but that IRP could be a little touchy. So we have to, I think we need to talk about that, you know, separately.
Yeah. On the miscellaneous stuff at the bottom, JNS Interior is still working on their open house. The car dealership that was interested in expanding into Plainview, I spoke with the owner. His accountant has advised him not to move into Plainview because his other location is too close and maybe be too competitive. So the RCMB building is still available. I'll be looking for something else to go into that space. D and K Lane has changed hands. The new owners are fully running it. Please stop in and say hello. And I did finally, after months and months of whining with Bruce's help, got a co-chair for the clown days festival. So we're good to go. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Kurt? Thank you for checking everything off of my list that I gave you last month. I looked at everything, it was completed, so thank you.
Way to go, Kurt.
Good. Wish you the best. Yeah. Yeah, I've been busy this month.
I see that. And this meeting might be busy again.
Roads are all screwed up. You gotta be patient with us. Get them done when we do, but. Park fences, we got them the other day. We'll be putting them in, while they're permitting.
Next week.
Troy Limpin Glass, right when the flood is.
Right when the flood is.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's just one of them times we'll be getting bathrooms, everything open, pools going.
I'd really like to-
Transfer's been kind of overwhelmed, so.
Yeah, I'd really like to commend you and all of your staff for all the hard work and the hours put in during the flooding. I know you guys were continuously-
Yeah, we were a little tired after that.
But thank you.
You gotta do it.
Thank you.
And Bruce, close your ears. We found a dump truck in South Sioux. Kind of short old brown, he's getting tired and it's four grand. Guy said he'd hold it, so I don't know if we're going to have to do a-
Right, what we're doing is we're looking at, it's a case where we have to follow the rules, but because this is a pretty good looking vehicle to replace the old brown one, the old brown one has no life in the winter and only half-life in the summer, but it would be a nice dump truck to have for the transfer and CDG.
Trees and concrete.
And the reason, you know what, Bruce, that was, we won't, want to follow the rules. We can't just up and purchase it offhand, but if we may be looking at it for example.
Four thousand, right?
That's it.
That borders on getting you under bid rules anyway, but if you tell the guy you'll rent it for a couple of years, you're never going to sure.
I think it sounds better.
Rent to own.
Rent to own for two years.
What would we, what would we do to the woman? Are we keeping it or are we just-
We would still have, like, some of that.
We could use the dollars to CD once in a while and just haul stuff around, but it's just getting tired.
And in addition to that, just to clarify some of this, where we're looking at the dollars maybe is that Suez, who had worked on our water tower, had done, I won't say very much damage, but realized the responsibility for something that they altered. And we just got a check in today for fifty-three hundred back from them to replace and take care of part of that and plus that would be, you know, money that we'd be looking at maybe to take on this truck. So it wouldn't have to come out of any other special fund. Did you hear that, Kyle? Okay.
Anyone else? Any chance of a street sweeper on the appearance?
Yeah, we got, we ordered a new slate cylinder for it. It's supposed to have been here last week, but they threw their own part in, but yeah, we'll get that out.
I think one of the things I'm going to do too, Bob, is prior to the clown days last year, I have a nice working relationship with Pierce and Osborne too, don't want to leave you guys out, but I think there's street sweeper will make his appearance to come up and clean the streets as they did last year.
We've got a lot of friends in our area.
They got that new one.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, Kurt.
Thank you.
I'll defer mine to the end if that's okay, so we can keep going and you can get some business to be here.
Number five, audit report.
Okay, I'm Kyle over here for the OMP, I'm also on Galway, Luther at Grand Island. Got scared to go over audit report tonight and it looks like everyone's got it there in front of them. So kind of do a brief overview of the audit and then hit on some of the more benchmarking type of things. The audit report itself, there was opinion paragraphs actually on page three, an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level assurance you can get from an outside agency. Essentially what that means is that financials are free from material misstatement on that side of things in accordance with the types of formats we're presenting on, which if we flip to, then page five is where the MBNA starts. And so this is governmental financials, as you guys are probably aware, are a little bit strange in the formatting, but the MBNA is the only spot in the financials where you can actually see comparative information year over year. So in that section, page eight's kind of where the comparative information starts. We got the statements of net position year over year. You know, assets across the board are about the same. Debt went down about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which means net position obviously went up. However, unrestricted net position, which is the money that we're free to spend, did not go up at all really, stayed pretty stagnant. However, your investment in capital assets increased about four hundred thousand. Restricted went down a little bit. So it's a combination of all those moving parts. The one good thing that we did do, we did get those monies transferred from the enterprise funds to the general fund to help, you know, bring that deficit balance up. We're not quite there yet, you know, we have restrictions on what we can transfer in a year on that side of things. So you can see the unrestricted governmental net position's still a deficit of a hundred and four, but last year was a deficit of six hundred and twenty-five. So good progress there on that side of things. Page nine is our revenues and expenses. Once again, nothing really too big to hit on there, pretty consistent across the board on the revenues and expenses, small ups and downs there. Page ten though, is our enterprise or business type activities and you can see everything's pretty similar to the prior year. We'll hit on it here a little bit. Water revenue, you can see last summer was a wet summer. So water revenue went down in addition with recommendations in the past must to reallocate expenses more in line where they should fall and some major water repairs, expenses shot up. So as we'll see, the water fund is the one fund out of the enterprise funds that actually showed a loss in the current year. And then down below, you can see the transfers to other funds, so about five hundred and forty-two thousand net dollars going out of the business type activity funds over to the general. So that's good there on that side of things. Bottom of page eleven, you can see, as I said, there was some pretty significant capital improvements that got made during there. You can see the majority of them, largest being the playground equipment and the street repaving and then the final payments on the power plant were up there on that side of things. So some pretty big dollars again this year in capital improvements. With that, I'm going to then flip to page fourteen. And so this is the first presentation of what most people look as a balance sheet, profit, loss, summary of statement of net positions, and statement of activities. We have the governmental activities, which are your general fund, street fund, all your special revenues, economic development, sales, tax, and so on, and then your business type, which are your water sewer trash and electric. And then over there on the far side, the only spot that it is in this report, the component, which is your manor, Plainview Manor, and they obviously issued their own separate audit report, good information there. I refer you to that report more so than just reading this side comment because it is just kind of a side bar to the main city audit report. So you can kind of see there, you know, nothing really too drastic. The due to from other funds that does sit out there for that three hundred thousand, that's essentially the money that has been, I'll call it borrowed on the pooled checking account from the general fund. It's owed back to the water sewer trash sanitation, electric. On that side of things, that was, I believe, six hundred and thirty-five thousand last year, so we were able to knock it down quite a bit with those transfers coming across. Nothing else too big. You can see there at that bottom, that unrestricted net position or deficit for the governmental activities. Then if you flip to page fifteen, this is the, it's called the net expense format. So you actually start with your expenses, then you start with your revenues that coincide with those expenses, whether it's a charge for service or operating grants. And it gets us to that column where we have the net expenses. And so in your governmental activities, you see a lot of negative numbers and that essentially means that those programs or those types of activities within the city do not support themselves. So they have to have additional dollars to support themselves. And so you can see down below, we have property tax dollars, sales tax dollars, state allocation, which is highway allocation, municipal equalization. Those are the big dollars that we need to support those activities. So we need about, roughly last year was eight hundred and fifty-one thousand. We had one point four of additional support, four hundred and ninety thousand of those transfers. So if you back that off, you know, there is actually a positive surplus still of five hun, or fifty thousand dollars there. Those transfers helped bump it up to five hundred and forty-two. So governmental activities did increase their position five forty-two. You can see the business type activities, a couple, sanitation was about a break even and water re- already kind of hit on, small loss. However, they did, their net position decreased two ninety-four due to that transfer coming across. So nothing really too big there and you can see the manor out to the side. They showed a profit of seventy-four thousand before the transfer from the sales tax from the city of fifty-two thousand. So, you know, surprisingly, you know, we deal in the nursing home world quite a bit. That's one of the two nursing homes that I saw with a profit this last year. So kudos to them on that side of things.
It's really tight ship.
Yeah, so.
Is it all okay this year?
A little rough right now.
As is everyone. The next sheet of page sixteen is our governmental funds. So this is the individual breakouts. And so all these funds roll up into the governmental activities. Nothing too big. Your other governmental funds, which the details on page sixty-one, we're not going to hit on those a lot. Those are your sales tax dollars, which are restricted for the manor, the housing authority, and the Keno dollars. So they don't rise to the level of enough activity to be considered a major fund on your financial statements, but they are presented there in a singular format with supplemental information kind. Nothing too big to hit on. You know, I, do I talk with Mike about it? The pool construction, you can see the restrictive number down there was about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand at the end of September, based on kind of projected sales tax numbers. Sometime in the next eight to twelve months, you'll actually have accrued enough dollars to take off those pool bonds, so it's going to go back to what those sales tax dollars can be used for. Page seventeen is just the reconciliation, how you get between the two financial statements because the governmental activities don't include capital assets, long-term debt, notes receivable, the settlement in acquisition does, so those are considered expenses in the one format. So it's kind of more of a cash basis, what you guys are used to seeing on daily side of things. Page eighteen's just our revenues and expenses. Once again, nothing really too big there. Expenses and revenues are pretty similar year over year with the exception of the large transfer in. And same thing, page nineteen's how you get back and forth between the two. Twenty, electric, water, sewer, sanitation. You can see that three hundred thousand, how it breaks out there that I hit on there, a hundred and five from both water and electric, forty-five from sewer and sanitation. So once again, nothing really too big there on that side of things. Page twenty-one then is our revenues and I kind of hit on it a little bit, that our revenue was down the water fund. Uh the system operation and personnel costs were up, uh caused that thirty-three thousand dollar decrease. Um and then once we had a big transfer going across. Um that's really pretty much the whole reasoning for that side of things. But you know, it's the ebbs and flows of summer in Nebraska. So I ask for that, I'm gonna flip all the way back to page forty-two. And this is where we get into the footnotes. Um good information there, um a lot of it's just required information, but it kinda gives a little bit more description as to what you are reading. Uh page forty-two, I'm just gonna point out to you, this is where uh the notes receivable for economic development notes are. So those are the individual economic development notes. And then there is also thirteen housing loans outstanding with a hundred and fifty-one thousand principal balance due at September thirtieth. Um and then at the bottom of page forty-three and then for the next few pages, we get into the debt. And so that's all the description on your debt. Uh I'm gonna flip to page forty-seven, so that's kinda where we see the changes. Uh governmental activities, uh had eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in new debt. The majority of that was uh in the street fund. We paid off the bond anticipation notes, took out the new Geo Varys Purpose Bond. Um and then we had some notes payable with the bank for the police cruiser, uh playground equipment. And then there's also a hundred thousand dollars that's financed, um that's essentially going to be covered by assessments when those dollars finally come in. Um and then on the business type with a new trailer. And then there's a capital lease with the totes, uh through Bud sanitation there on that side of things. So that's that side of things. Page fifty-four, uh commitments, what you guys had outstanding at September thirtieth. Uh Fourth Street Water Main Extension, you guys had agreed and committed to that. Uh and then on page fifty-five, the contractual commitments. Uh you guys do have the sixty-month contract with Bud's uh for trash service um in the city and disposal um through twenty-twenty-one. Um and then the utility service company, which I believe Suez, who you're talking about there. Um you guys have the annual water tower maintenance.
Yes.
On that side of things, so those annual payments are twenty-eight thousand. Once again, that's a big reason why the water fund showed what it was 'cause we had that first big payment um this year on that side of things. So that's really that side of things. Page fifty-seven, just for your information, um this is the budget versus actual comparison. Um we did have a budget amendment during the year in order to help transfer those dollars across that you guys approved right before approving the twenty-nineteen budget. You know, with that being said, nothing really too big to hit on there, but just for your information purposes, those budget versus actual comparisons are presented for uh the major funds. Um outside of that, that's the audit report, so I'm gonna now flip to the letters. The first letter is just what we call the S D M W letter, so Significant Deficiencies Material Witness. It's the short little two-pager. Um once again, just like every year, uh segregation of duties. Uh to the city, village, size of you guys, it's impossible to have segregation of duties. Pretty much, you know, Courtney can pretty much handle a transaction from start to finish. So it's always important that the council stays involved, scrutinizes transactions, you know, for very good reason, you know, the Pender report came out less than three weeks ago. Uh it just goes to show that, you know, there's a good reason to stay there. You know, it's always, the people that commit fraud are never the people that you don't trust 'cause obviously if you didn't trust them, you wouldn't have them in the position.
Did you say Pender? I'll help you out by saying Pilger.
Pilger, yeah, sorry. Right, right direction, wrong name, but yeah. So I mean, i- it's out there, but just maintain that skepticism, maintain that, you know, there's some good questions as I was sitting here and I got asked, Julie questioned a couple of things and asked those things. Um the other letter is the board letter. Um so we have the audit adjustments, there was eighteen audit adjustments uh to the governmental funds that increased fund balance by five hundred and twenty-three thousand. Twenty-five audit adjustments to the business type activities that decreased net position by two fifty-seven. A lot of them, I'm not gonna go into the big adjustments. The biggest adjustment was the recording of that five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar transfer. Um I got double recorded, just trying to make the do-to-do-from flow back and forth and the do-to-do-from kinda doesn't exist in the accounting system type deal. So that's really what it comes down to, that was the big transaction. And the rest of them, you guys keep cash basis statements and we switched accrual basis. So that's the reason for the lot of those audit adjustments there on that side of things. Recommendation wise, um we'll flip to page three there. Uh accounts receivable aging, you know, we have a pretty big allowance there, forty-three-five. Uh a lot of it are accounts that have been written off and sent to collections. They still show up on that accounts receivable aging, you know. In order to help staff and everything, if they've already been sent to collections, we might as well just write them off, adjust them off. It's not going to affect the bottom line of any of those funds, but it gets, cleans up that accounts receivable aging. So we can truly not miss someone that all of a sudden gets past a hundred and twenty days and not have someone else stiff us for, you know, electric, water, sewer uh revenue. And then the second one there is the four fifty-seven retirement plan. Um four fifty-seven plan in itself is unique. Uh the employer contributions are subject to social security and Medicare tax. Um and I think we've talked with Courtney, it got this fixed um since then. But then in addition, Plainview Manor, if you do have a fourth, the four fifty-seven plan also, you know, making sure that it is getting taxed. Uh it's one of those things that we probably caught it about five years ago for the first time. It's not a well-known thing, but four fifty-seven plans are mainly used for golden parachute payments to corporate executives. So there's a reason why they're getting taxed. Um but a lot of cities and villages in Nebraska for some reason got into them because of obviously their investment advisors. Um but just something to keep in mind, so whether, yeah, at least get it corrected to the taxability of it 'cause last year you guys contributed about twenty-one thousand as a city. You know, eight percent of roughly of that is, you know, sixteen hundred dollars of social security and Medicare tax that technically should have been paid to the IRS. Um so nothing too big there, but just something to follow up on. Library Foundation, uh they provided about two hundred and ten thousand support when we built the library. Um you know, goes back to the whole uh component unit type thing, you know. If they truly are component unit or are they a separate nonprofit? Um you know, we didn't, we weren't able to examine the records, but it's always something to keep in mind, uh especially, you know, as we're talking about community buildings and stuff like that.
I, I think that it's important Kyle for you to maybe explain, we've had this conversation several times and, and I know on some of the issues with the Library Foundation, I am mortal enemy number one. But keeping me out of it and trying to protect the best interest, this council needs to be aware that um the foundation seeking to not release that, they are a component, I believe they are a component unit. This in my opinion, Kyle may concur or not.
If it's a stand, if it's a standalone Library Foundation, um that is number one in component units examples is a standalone Library Foundation. If the Library Foundation funds are held by a community foundation or a county type foundation or some other entity, then it's not a standalone. But the sole reason that that Library Foundation, if it's a standalone, exists is for the benefit of the library, which therefore pulls it back into a component unit. You know, why is it important? First of all, accountability. Uh you know, we've seen enough of school foundation uh embezzlements and frauds in the past ten years. There's a reason why those should be on there. There's still a ton of them that are not on the books, they're not on the side of things. And the second thing is, you know, it's good information for you to have. If there's a foundation out there that has five hundred thousand dollars that can help support a project, why should the citizens of the community be supporting that project? Um if they're not willing to support it themselves, so you know.
I can check that, but I think they have a separate corporation, don't they?
The, it was, it's still a standalone, it's still a building to be in life. And I agree Bruce, you would know this as well as anyone, but.
Correct.
The point being is that they have the, the funds that were set aside and part of this goes back to, and it's not really going after anyone, but a lot of that money was built or came into that fund for the building of the library, still sits in the foundation. And when we have these discussions at budgetary times and these um very animated proceedings about who's paying for books and things like that, this is why I tend to say go to the foundation because they have an obligation. Am I too far, or at least a maybe responsibility to their own foundation for what they were designing?
And I don't disagree, they could have their own standalone corporation. Um it's Gatsby language, um that pulls them back and you know, just because they're a standalone nonprofit, five oh one C three does not preclude them from being a component unit of the city because the sole reason they exist is for the benefit of the city. So you know, I, just something to consider, but uh you know, it's out there. You know, they gave two hundred and nine thousand, they might have twenty thousand dollars, so it might be completely immaterial to financial statements. That's nothing that I can make a judgment call on, so. And then the last one is just, the debt service fund um has an old do from the general fund for sixty-two thousand dollars, you know. We need to figure out a plan to eliminate this, I guess, even if we figure out that it doesn't exist, um you know, 'cause that's been on the financial statements for as far back as you can go on the state auditor's website, which I believe is two thousand and ten. No one really has quite an idea of where that came from. That still works here.
Longer than Mike.
Correct. Um so just something, figure out what it is, whether it needs to be cleaned up on that side of things. Um so then benchmarking, uh and I guess if you guys have questions on the audit report, I already can hop right into benchmarking. Benchmarking, uh this is comparing you to your peer group. So you know, cities, villages that have same, similar population, in your guys' case, most of them will be cities, similar activities, uh you know, that unrestricted net position. Guys showed vast improvement in the governmental activities. Uh we're still held that negative deficit, deficit balance, but you know, making progress there. And the business type activities, even though we transferred a lot of dollars, uh we're still only about three percent below the benchmark of thirty-five percent. Um revenues, your per capita, your grants and contributions, uh you know, those ebb and flow. You can see the three-year, it's going back, uh two thousand and sixteen was obviously the big year for the library. Um still five hundred and twenty-three dollars per capita, last year's a hundred and eight, so still good per capita dollars. And then the next two, property taxes, state allocation, they kinda go hand in hand together. Uh property taxes are about twenty dollars below per capita and it has nothing to do with your levy being lower, or lower. Um it has everything to do with your guys' valuation being lower than the peer group. And so you can see in number three there, uh your municipal equalization is actually about uh thirty, twenty-four dollars higher than the peer group because of that. And so that's kinda that equalizing factor and that's what municipal equalization exists for. Um it's just one of the components is valuation. And then once again, sales tax dollars, you know, uh you guys are about a hundred and seventy-three dollars per capita. The peer group's about two hundred and five, so you know, anything, you know, economic development, so those type of things, more you can get in there, boost the valuation, boost those sales tax dollars, lessens that burden on the property tax owners on that side of things. Governmental expenses, nothing really too big to hit on here. Um admin did go down, um back down below the peer group average. Uh your police department and library run higher than the peer group average. Uh police, you know, about forty dollars per capita higher. Once again, that's your guys' determination when you guys are setting budget, what the citizens are, you know, requesting there on that side of things. But just to kinda look there. Unassigned fund balance, you know, we like to have that unassigned general fund balance at about three to four or five months cash balance. Obviously deficit still, hopefully we can get that corrected and turned around by next year. Um and then the second page of that, uh we'll print out the levy rates for the general fund. You can see that per capita, uh you guys, your general fund levy is a hundred and seventy-four dollars per capita compared to two oh five. Um and your guys' levy rate's fifty cents compared to the peer group of forty-three. So that valuation is significant there on that side of things. Um depreciable capital assets, you know, governmental activities, uh you know, I've been hitting a little hard on those, that deficit fund balance. Your guys' capital assets though, you know, anything less than thirty percent, you've gotta be ready to start replacing. You guys are at sixty-three percent right now. A lot of it has to do with, you know, having a newer library facility, having some major projects come up here in the last few years. So you know, hopefully not a ton of, you know, major capital improvements. Obviously if you guys decide to build a community center, that's uh something else there on that side of things. But business type activities, you guys are right at that threshold where we're gonna get in that replacement phase. Um and so at the very bottom there, you know, uh there's needs to start potentially being some dollars set aside for that replacement phase. Um you guys have about four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of cash. Um so what, slightly less than what we'd like to see for operating, but you know, get transferred to help correct our deficit balance. Um but there's potentially, you know, some significant replacement dollars coming due here in the future. So that's really benchmarking, kinda comparing you to your peer group. Any questions? Alright, sounds good, thank you.
Just kind of as a reminder, as we move on, uh part of this audit, when we talk about these transfer of funds, um had been in a situation where uh using Mike Palmer as we did, um did not have the same philosophies in uh some of these controls and some of these ways of doing things, which is why we built up somewhat of a surplus on the enterprise side and it ended up losing on the general side. So what you're seeing is these dollars trying to flip-flop to make the general, which is where he's saying the unassigned or the, the place where you'd wanna be, looks a little bit better on paper. The restricted funds that we have are still relatively healthy, if I would say that, because we're still.
Restricted funds are very healthy on that side of things.
So we, we have room to be able to turn it around, but it's, it's certainly gonna take, we might be able to do it this year, but I don't know, two years for sure, how many years?
No, and that, he speaks to a good point, it's uh, you know, following him, we know that's a typical audit situation that we see is an upside-down general fund and that's the last thing anyone wants is an upside-down general fund, so.
It's just been a common, it was just a common practice and seen it throughout municipalities in particular.
Good, so, alright, thank you.
Same truck Kyle. Number six, discussion, action, mayor appointments of the C D A board members. Brett Corr for one year, Jody Johnson for two, Kevin Lincoln for three, Mary Doughtery for four, and Grant Umer for five. And I talked with Darren about that and that is his wish.
I'll make a motion to um follow the mayor's appointment of the C D A members.
Second. Julie?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Number seven, discussion, action, mayor appointments, library board. I did go to the meeting last Monday and uh Tony resigned as she's moving out of town and they approved or asked for Megan to get on and I did talk to Darren about that also and he's okay with that, as long as you are.
I'll make a motion to, like, make it to the library board. Second.
Um Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Number eight, action, confirmation, National Library Week, April thirtieth to the thirteenth. Whereas libraries are not just about what they have for people, but what they do for and with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas librarians are leaders in their institutions and organizations, in their communities, in the nation and in the world. Whereas librarians continue to lead the way in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. Whereas libraries and librarians look beyond their traditional roles and provide transformative opportunities for education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment, and engagement, as well as new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries and librarians lead their communities in innovation, providing steam programming, maker spaces, and access and training for new technologies. Whereas libraries and pioneers support democracy and affecting social change with a commitment to providing equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries lead in working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that Darren Syke, mayor, proclaimed National Library Week, April seventh to the thirteenth, twenty nineteen. I encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarian. Because of you are library leaders, libraries transform. Number nine, action. Number nine, action, proclamation, Nebraska Public Transit Week, April seventh to the thirteenth. Whereas Nebraska Public Transportation Week has been declared for April seventh to the thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and whereas the date was chosen to honor the public transportation system across Nebraska, including the local system, better known as the Plainview Handyman. And whereas public transportation systems across the state of Nebraska are celebrating public transportation during this timeframe. And whereas every year thousands of Nebraska citizens are able to participate in using public transportation to help them remain independent. And whereas Plainview has continued to support the use of public transportation throughout the year, and whereas Plainview recognizes the hard work and dedication that the city's staff and especially the drivers do to help make the Plainview Handyman service an integral part of the lives of many residents in the community. Now therefore be it resolved that by virtue of authority invested in me as mayor of the city of Plainview, Nebraska, I, Darren Syke, do hereby issue this proclamation to celebrate public transportation, and I do hereby declare April seventh to the thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, to be Public Transportation Week. Number twelve, discussion, action, approve transfer of Keno operator license from DNK Lanes to four D Hospitality Incorporated.
Just have to make a motion. I'll make a motion to transfer the Keno operator license from DNK to four D Hospitality.
Second. Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Myself? Do you read number fourteen?
Uh, fourteen, no. It might be able to get fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. Discussion, action, move farmer's market to Chilvers.
I didn't see Renee, but Dick Haskins was here earlier, but I'll just fill you in on what's happening. It can be an action item, which would be wonderful. It doesn't necessarily have to go that, more as an FYI, so it's whatever you wish to do. But because the RC and D building and the organization is moving to Ponca, where their leader, their director is now, we were fortunate to have like Dick, Danny Whacker, and of course Jan Jordensen for several years, but because she's from the Sioux City area, they felt it would be best, they'll still represent us, but they'll have their headquarters in Ponca. They still have the farmer's market, which is one of their active projects, and they want to continue it here. It's been doing very, very well, but they asked that they move it to Chilvers Park. I've been after them for probably four years. I think whenever they started this thing, that I thought that that was the natural progression to get into the park, kind of like what Pierce does when you go around the turn, there'd be a lot more visibility. So, they ask, and politely so, if it would be okay to use the west side of Chilvers Park where the Chilvers sign is at, and the parking is along between that and the swimming pool and the school. So, I think it's a natural fit. They've got natural shading over there, and very little, they have to do differently. So, if you wish, it would make it more official to have an action item, since it's on here, to approve, to allow them to improve the farmer's market there, that would be great.
Is there anything current that the municipality or raises were approved that you'd see any issues with this?
They're got everything. They got electricity and all shebang there, so they should get to go.
I'll make a motion to move farmer's market to Chilvers Park then.
Second. Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Myself? Five minutes here.
All right. Let's see what you have. What's that?
Fourteen's too long in that thing.
Well, I think Bruce will have some things to hand out on fourteen.
We could make fourteen last four and a half minutes. You'd ask that there be an ordinance to look at. Here is draft. I'm hoping it's not there. Seems like you're going to make it.
It's a little.
There's a note down, it's important.
The reason, I think this is fairly short, is I need a little guidance, and you guys need a chance to read this over and decide for sure what you want to do. So, if you recall, this is the Plainview ordinance that would adopt the Vacant Property Act that Nebraska passed a couple of years ago. We had never done that, but it's entirely possible. We didn't have a draft in the league, so I took the act itself and used most of the language and put it together into this ordinance. And the act at the state level talks about municipalities and talks about purposes and what have you. Well, this has all been modified to say it's Plainview, and here are the reasons, and there's a set of findings and reasons in the beginning. There's a set of purposes on the front page, there's a set of definitions, those all came out of the statute. There is a set of, a section on the application and how you're going to do this, and you need to designate a program administrator. Now, this is not a small matter. I mean, I suppose you want to go out of the city office, but somebody has to chase these records. And if you truly went around Plainview and picked up on all the vacant houses and commercial property, and undertook to put them on this registry, then there's a bit of a project there. And that needs some attention, but I don't know what you could do other than name the city administrator, be that administrator, and then you'll have to delegate or find a way to do it internally, and there's stuff to do. So, if that, you know, I could fill in that blank with that topic, and that's not too controversial. The requirements for how you register, that is statutory. Read it over so you know what's there. The thing that is a bit more discretionary and needs some discussion and perhaps thought for next month is, what are you going to charge these people? The idea of this thing is that it gradually adopts the ante. They're exempt from registration as a vacant property if they have a good faith effort to sell the property. And if they're really pricing it at a market price and they're trying to sell it, they don't have to do this. But if they don't qualify for some exemption, they have to register. And the thing says, basically, every six, or every six months, they have to re-register and pay a fee. And the statutes provide for the fee to be an initial fee that you get to pick, not to exceed, I think the statute said three hundred dollars, while you wouldn't want to start any higher than that. But then it doubles each re-registration up to a maximum of ten times the initial fee. I mean, it's designed to make it hurt. It doesn't have to go that far. You could go up to five times the initial fee. But if you make it a hundred dollars every six months, you're talking a thousand every six months, once you get there, maybe that's excessive. And that's what you need to think about, read through the format, be prepared to fill in the blank, how painful do you want to make this? And the other thing we could do is base it somehow on the assessed value or the square footage or something like that. You know, the vacant lot, you're not going to charge, well, the vacant lot with a garage, I think it has to be a building to be under this stuff. But you're not going to charge them a thousand dollars every six months, I wouldn't think. But a big nasty house in the nice place that you've been up the ante. See, this is the type of thing that would make things like the Steinkhaus across the street house down here tend to go away. So, think about how that could be. I mean, and this sets the outside parameters for it, but you need, I think, to read it clear over and be sure that you understand what it involves. And then there was a section on how they can be exempt. And I, that's in two C, it's at the bottom of the second page. It provides for exemptions under possibilities of seasonal residence, fire damage, construction, absent. Well, it seems to me that if you adopt those in just that language, everybody in the world is going to claim they have an exemption for one reason or another. And I wrote in some special requirements, but only if the city council by a three-fourth vote just votes to give it the exemption every year. If you don't do that, then it's not exempt. I mean, a lot of those are what you want to clean up, the fire damage or the construction or the something like that. So, just don't grant the exemption, and you're good. The statute says you can give them an exemption. Well, I think that should be none intentionally if you think it's warranted, otherwise clean the darn thing up and get rid of it. So, read that over and save this. I think it requires more discussion, and we're going to accomplish.
I'll bring dollar amounts as a recommendation next month, and then you discuss it, you want to change it.
Want to copy? Sure.
I got an extra copy if you don't.
There's some more, I brought ten, I thought there might be need for a few more.
Number ten, discussion, action, public hearing, Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District Housing Grants, seven thirty P M, and Resolution Number five eight two, approve application to Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District for housing trust funds. Public hearing is not.
Lowell's not here, but Susan's quite well aware of this and pushes through the hearing.
I haven't seen the resolutions, though.
You said you're going to apply for a grant.
Yeah.
Since you do have a captured audience, if you want to do a two or three seconds, just a quick overview, if anybody has a question, this is public hearing, so they have a right to actually speak to it.
All right. Hold on. We are proposing the construction of a fourplex unit south of Nathan's next house. I only know this lot as College Park Edition twenty-three, and it's not listed here, the actual address. It's on Fourth Street.
I know one north of Fourth.
So, the fourplex project, it is workforce housing. You can make up to a hundred and twenty percent of the median income in this area and still qualified to live in this, in these units. And the median income for Plainview is at forty-four thousand five hundred dollars. It is not low-income housing. The home plans are being passed around back there. All of you guys have already seen it. Thirteen hundred square foot, two-bedroom, two-bath homes, ranch level homes. They have concrete form wall construction, which will lower the maintenance costs, help with the durability, maintenance, and lower the insurance costs. The project total is eight hundred and eight thousand dollars on construction, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars needed to be raised in private investment, which we did, and the grant that we're applying for is five hundred thousand dollars. Four hundred and fifty thousand of that will be applied to the construction of the homes. Fifty thousand will go to NED as an administrative fee. We submitted a pre-application for this housing project in February. Our pre-application was accepted and approved. We were allowed to advance to the next stage. We are now asking for your blessing to submit the full-up grant application for this project. If awarded, we would find out in late July, closing on that award in August. Construction could begin as soon as September or October. There's an option on the land that has been obtained for this project as well.
And understand, there's no exposure for the city here. This is just the city cooperating in the effort on the grant. And the rest of the investment is private, in whatever form they choose to make it, either all equity or part equity, part debt. And the option on the land exists now, we'll have to extend it a bit, it's more of that that MacRisingers owns up north of the lots that the city has for sale. For now, that's likely the place of choice, and that's what's been submitted on the grant. It may not be a grave stone, if they can find a better place it could move, but probably that's the place. And the fourplex would go up there, and it probably will only go if the grant comes through. And the investors who want to see this grant is a part of the deal. It's a big deal to get half the money from a grant. So, that's, that's the plan, and if, I would think there's a reasonable reason to argue with that as a plan. If it can happen, plain you get to the fourplex.
And if you recall, a couple of months ago, you had already, as a council, approved Kelly, and Kelly's in the audience right now to, has gone forward with this, very good cooperation from a lot of people. Your exposure came through, you know, when you opted to put in sewer lines and water lines and things in anticipation something like this may happen in our lifetime. So, this is a good project.
Anybody else from the public?
Questions?
Wish it was more visible to the thousands of people that drive through town, if one of bigger towns was more appealing. I certainly not suggesting that you, that, I just, I just wish there was a place along Highway twenty or close by where, where we could have something that looks new and vibrant and welcoming and progressive.
I think it's fair to say, you know, the investors might think that too. For now, the thing is pending with this lot that's probably adequate for approval, but it is not a grave stone, and if they can find something closer, better, paving, whatever, I'm sure that would be fine. Right now, there is nothing easily available, so to make it happen in the timeframe available, this is the lot that's been signed down.
We also have a few restrictions due to the grant. We can't be within three thousand feet of a rail, which eliminates anything along Highway twenty with visibility, which is one of the reasons why it's not visible. Just little things like that, that the government likes to throw at us. Another thing too, is when we were looking at lots, that one was a little attractive, I think, because the city had just recently invested in, into that property, the infrastructure. And if you look at our comprehensive plans, where our future growth is for housing, that is the corridor that we have selected for future housing.
Stimulate some more growth out there.
Yeah. So. Any other questions?
Hopefully we'll never have another year like this one, but that is a totally gravelled road, isn't it?
It's gravelled.
Yeah, right now it is.
Well, I mean, you know, hopefully we'll never have another year like this for the time.
It is on the one and six.
To get to the house, getting one of the public hearing.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anything else?
That's a, that's a good point.
Motion to close the public hearing?
One second.
So, I, Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Resolution Number five eighty-two, approve the application?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number five eighty-two to approve the application for the NED housing trust funds.
Second. Pam?
Aye.
Aye. Myself? Aye. Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Thank you.
If I knew we were bringing hearing, we might have just tossed this whole thing out.
Thank you very much. Seven forty P M, open the public hearing, discussion, action for the liquor license approval, Class CK for four D Hospitality Incorporated.
Randy, would you like to come forward and just see whether it's a public hearing or not, let everybody introduce yourself and all be above.
My name's Randy D. I just recently bought DNK Lanes from David Incourt, and just changed over the liquor license myself and operate the, just out.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Eric? I'm sorry, my name's Randy. Last name's D.
Anyone from the public's speak for or against?
Continue with the Keno.
Yeah, we already approved that.
I think it's great for the community to continue with it, and there's a lot of different projects, and we all come occasionally down. Appreciate it.
My, my plan is to go back to actually serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner as well in the future. I'll just start right now with the normal hours, four to close, I mean, whether it be ten o'clock or two o'clock, you know, but go back to actually more of a breakfast and lunch menu as well.
I was in there the other night, and he would not offer me any free drinks. I was in there the other night and he would not offer me any free drinks. I'm just saying, he's smarter than he looks.
Second? Second, myself, I, Julie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, action to where we already did today? Yep, you gotta do that.
No, I've done enough.
Motion to approve the liquor license for four D hospital. Bob, you got the second.
You got the second.
She already did it.
Pam, sorry. Motion to approve the liquor license, myself, I, Pam.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Congrats.
Thank you.
It's nice to have you.
Okay. Keynote grants. We have four applications this evening. And I'd just like to let the audience know, there's the four applications for a total asking of ten thousand dollars. And we have in the fund right now sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-nine cents. First one is for teammates for two thousand dollars.
And I don't know Janice isn't here, she submitted it, but I don't... I think the application will speak for it, so her teammates and Janice are... Sir, where are they?
I did check with Courtney on some of these keynote grants. We received it the last time. And the last time teammates received this was back in two thousand and ten. So, they haven't asked for funds for a while. I make a motion to grant a thousand dollars for the teammates' application.
Second? Second. Teammates for one thousand dollars. Pam?
Aye.
Myself, I, Julie.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. Highway twenty Hot Rod Association for five thousand dollars. Dr. Thor?
Think you have a couple of them here. The doctor, Thor, is here.
I'll be brief. This will be my third full year of doing the car show. I do it for the city of Plainview and for the festival, try to bring people here. To be honest, zero pain ask. Really, it takes up so much time. Wait for my family, go to all the car shows and hand out stuff. I don't take cars. I got a garage full of cars, but I don't take them. But it's important. You know, and I understand where the city sits. And this year, I've been going out and looking for funds. And it's a lot harder this year. Puskagaw's got way back. Helen is a no. A lot of individuals are no or barely what they used to. Our trophies are five grand. When you look at prize money, puts us at eight. T-shirts are about two to twenty-five hundred. Dash plaques, miscellaneous, that's anything without advertising. Our advertising, Brooke Curtis sends out. We do fourteen hundred individual invites, which is about fifteen hundred bucks. We advertise in the Motor Mark Magazine, which is a subsidiary of Motor Trend, three hundred and fifty a month. I do that from January, February, and March up to April. They start out with the big winter fest in Sioux Falls. And it's a huge draw there. I guess, you know, my goal ultimately was to make this a real huge car show, bring people to the town for the businesses and stuff. The cost is a lot. It really is. So, what you tell me tonight will determine if it goes next year. It will. And I'd like, you know, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but the two guys that helped me out the most are Rick Moesel and Rick Chris. And I'd like to give them an opportunity to just to say a few words.
Hello. I just want to say, I used to run the tractor pole here in town for several years. And it's a lot of work. And what he's doing is a lot, lot of work. And he's bringing a lot more people into town than what we were... But we had a pretty big tractor pole for several years there. And I finally give it up because of the same reason, money. But if you're looking to get people into town, and if you haven't been to it, go up there and check it out, because we're... He's dragging people in from, well, Alabama. I'm talking, you know, this is a huge car show. And if you don't think it is, then go and check out this car show and then go to Wausau. And I'm not picking on any towns, but I go to a lot of car shows. Crofton in the last couple of years, let's see, Crofton, Wausau, Osmond when they have one. Creighton used to have them. And you can go all the way around Neely, all the towns around. There's no car shows this big, other than like West Point, you know, and that thing's huge. But we have a super car show here. And so, anyway, you know, and all these people are coming into town, they're spending money, and they got to eat, and they got to drink. And I would venture to say that of everything that goes on for our clown carnival here, I would bet that if you want to go around and take the numbers, other than the barbecue, I bet you there's more people that come to this than anything that we do on that whole entire weekend. So, it's just something to keep in mind. But if we're wanting to draw people into Plainview, that's a lot of work. And I know personally, I'm not sticking money into it. I don't have it to do it. But I know that Jim has put a lot of time and money into it himself. So, just that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beanie. I just wanted to say Doc does do a lot of work to make this thing go. We volunteer our time at the show, but prior to, he does all the work. It does bring a lot of people to town. It actually makes the festival, bringing people to town. And I second everything Rick and Doc said, so thank you.
Do you have the numbers from where it first started to where it was last year? Because I know it's...
Quite a few years ago, I started, I brought a car, a couple of cars. Sherry did it. The Keystone Bar used to do it. And they had eight cars.
Eight. Eight.
And that was three years ago?
No, the very first year.
Oh, the very first.
That was like four, five years ago.
Okay.
Not the very first year.
Yeah.
We did it ten years.
Yeah, I didn't get it. I wasn't there at the beginning, but I've been in it the last like five or six years. But, you know, go from eight to... You know, and last year, we had, you know, Mike helped me out. We had sponsor, or not sponsor, but vendors coming in the night before. And I was coming into town at five A M. And it was still raining. And the year prior to that, we had thirty preregistered, and we had a hundred and fifty show up. Last year, we had a hundred and fifty preregistered, and only a hundred and thirty showed up because of the rain. I mean, every people paid, and everybody came. You know, if we can hit a decent weather, two fifty, three hundred cars is very achievable. You know, all the car shows that I go to, the big ones, and the guys I talk to, become friends with. I'm on the National Car Council. I joined it. Highway twenty Hot Rod Association became in existence because you had to have a car club in order to even apply to be a member. So, I went all in hoop jumping. But they've helped me out a lot. And they tell me it takes between five and seven years to get a show established where everybody puts it on their calendar, year after year after year after year. You know, it's up to you guys. You know, it's your town. I wasn't born here, wasn't raised here. I do the best I can. You know, I'm on school board, and I'm not very smart for a doctor, but I try.
I second that.
So, you know, help me out what you can. I appreciate it, you know. And if we don't make it this year, it just won't happen next year. So, it is what it is.
Any questions?
And Julie, if it helps, my favorite car is a Cornette. I got one.
Well played. I know that with the keynote grants, we try and do it every other year for the different entities within the town giving back. And I know that it's been well-received, and there are a lot of people that come to town for it.
Yeah, I don't know if you're aware, Julie, but, you know, the city council did grant me a keynote grant the last two years, each year for five grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was desperately needed. It's even worse so this year. So, you know what? Anything you do, you can do.
Any recommendations?
I will say this, the trophies have been ordered, the advertising been in place. Everything's sitting there. I can't change it for this year.
Can we?
What is the entry fee?
Yeah, Courtney, just ask.
I have just, like, what is your entry fee? Like, does that help cover some of that, or can you?
Yeah, well, okay, do the math. It was twenty-five bucks a car.
We had a hundred and fifty preregistered. You said?
I think we got like six or seven of them this year so far.
But I mean, last year.
Yeah, we had quite a few preregistered last year, but registration's nothing you can bank on in that time of the year because... You know, if you, if we were a big established show, you know, like West Point, they're invite... They used to be invite-only. And so, you had to register ahead of time if you want to be able to be in the door. But we're not even close to that level yet. So, even if you do the math of a hundred and fifty cars at twenty-five dollars a piece, that doesn't even cover our t-shirts.
There's not any money made on it.
Hell, no.
None.
It's a hole. It really is.
Never has been.
You know, so you guys got to decide if, you know, is the hole worth filling every year? Because I'll be here every year as long as you fill it. If you don't fill it...
And I realize it's important at clown days, but I'm just speaking financially-wise. Our keynote fund has gone significantly down the last three years.
Oh, I understand.
So, go up to D and K and start paying some... You know? You know, and there's nothing we can do about that. You know, I'm not trying to say you guys don't deserve the money, but I'm just going to speak up and say, you know, I'll be lucky if I get four thousand dollars back this quarter for the entire quarter from the state. Well, that only puts us back, you know, I mean, like, it's a slow process to rebuild that when we're... And I, it's not my decision to not to order it to you guys. I'm just, from a financial standpoint, it's hard to turn you down, but it's hard to say yes when...
Well, I completely understand, you know. And it's not just that. It's just, it's the farm economy, you know, everything's down. So, it's not, you're the coffin and the last nail in the coffin. There's a lot of nails sitting in it right now. So, that's kind of where it's at.
Probably make a motion for twenty-five hundred?
Okay?
Will second that.
Motion been made and seconded for twenty-five hundred. Myself, I, Pam.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Sorry, guys, it's not with last year, but...
Understand, it's not there. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, Plainview Manor and Plainview Hospital Foundation for one thousand two hundred for July second, community barbecue and fireworks show.
Nathan ditched me because he got an E R.
Oh, darn.
And I'm the one who sent him to the E R, so I guess I didn't pay for it.
Oh, well, there you go.
Basically, this is our third year with Plainview Area Health System Foundation and the Manor Foundation putting all the work and effort into it to try to do something for the community. The backup date of the clown festival, you know, they do fireworks that night, but we do it closer to the fourth. If they would get rained out again, she's nicely selected, that we would give the funds to be able to do more fireworks farther than. Last year, our numbers were close to three hundred. Two seventy-five, I believe, was our numbers that came in. Great help of the city, all picnic tables and things like that that were brought up there. Both foundations working together, having something for the kids. We have the bouncy houses, which have already been reserved. Those are three hundred right there. Jerry Stanley has already been reserved. I think it's two seventy-five. I don't want to quote, he is going to play, I believe, another facility prior to, so he gives us a little bit of a break right there. And then just fireworks keep going up, and we buy them all locally and things like that. So, a lot of donations made by individuals to get the meal cut off and things like that. And just something good for the community to get together and just do together as a whole. I just hold up the manor, just so my residents can be able to enjoy the night. We've done it for so many years. It just keeps growing and growing all the time. And being together with the two foundations has really worked well.
I know I had to work last year, but two years ago, it was a very good crowd. I was very impressed with it, so...
And like Hot Rod Association, weather pending, and, you know, changes at all, and ball games. You know, things are just busy. But we did pick July second, so we don't have to go ask for a special permission for after the fourth. Seems like during the week, it works out well. With the fourth being on a Thursday, we felt that everybody might head out of town Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, we went with the Tuesday evening event.
I've been there several times, and I know what it means to the residents. Absolutely. So, I would like to make a motion for the full twelve hundred.
Will second that.
Second. Myself, I, Julie.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Thank you.
And finally, Plainview Ballbackers for eighteen hundred dollars for a new building. Where would, is it going to be by the concession stand or by the, I mean, as close you can to the field stand?
Um, no. Well, by the field, yes, but not by the concession stand. So, where we've got it is you've got the softball field, the baseball field. It's going to be right out, just outside of the fence. So, I don't know, we've, the Ballbackers has really grown. We also will be picking up the soccer league as well now, here shortly. So, I don't know, we've remodeled the concession stand. It's in the works right now. So, we've actually asked the school to build our sharing. We will provide the other half and whatever's extra.
Like as far as the kids for labor training?
Yep, the wood shop.
The wood shop, yeah. Say something about the fence.
Well, the only recommendation I'd have here is it's nothing to do with the keynote. You can do what you want, but either you want to give a keynote to what you ever desire, but we'll still need Blake, because the city still owed a thousand dollars from the Ballbackers. And you can do that, maybe call Wash and take it from this and just forget the rest. But it's been sitting outstanding for... And I know Blake has answered to it two or three times, but it's never been paid, so...
I guess I'm unaware of...
That's why I don't want to put you on the spot. Cash is not...
I think it was before Bob and Pam were on the council.
But I know it's a thousand bucks that when they put that fence up, that agreed, and there was a spoiling of it, and just never got their half, so...
Have any of you been down to ball fields lately, the last year or two?
Last year, yes, but not this year.
Did you attend the concession stand at all?
I did not.
Did you see how little it is? There is no room to move.
I saw how little it was, but I didn't...
Quite a spot. And it's, the other half of that concession stand is where we kept all of our bases. The soccer people would put their stuff in there. We'd have to go all the way around for the four-wheeler. You know, and when you're hauling out all those bases and everything else, that's, I mean, that's heavy stuff. So, we'll make it a spot where the four-wheeler and all the bases, all the equipment can be in one spot. Load it all up, haul it out to the field, go from there. We'll have a much easier concession stand to move around in. It's just, it's, it'd just be helpful to have help paying for it, I guess.
Yeah, no, and it looks good. Keep in mind that as the historian, keep reminding you, half that project of the concession stand, the city's already paid for through, you budgeted it. And, you know, so, and that's fine. I mean, that's totally immaterial, but it has nothing to do with this keynote. But just kind of, you know, keep showing track of where your obligation is. So, we'll pay for half of the cost of that. And hopefully, they've been able to access the Earhart Group. And I think they're doing a great job, so... And I know you're up next. You're probably the next one on the list, Kurt.
I mean, speaking, that brings a lot of kids in town, a lot of ball games, a lot of money spent in town. All donated by parents working that concession. I can speak for it. It really was tiny and needs to be updated. And, you know, we've grown some great ball programs and tournaments in town that take whole weekends.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, I'd make a motion to grant Plainview Ballbackers a thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Second. One thousand dollars for the Plainview Ballbackers. Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Myself, I, Pam?
Aye.
Would you like us to wipe the slate clean on the fence then? Or you still, I mean, obviously that's, that's either here nor there, but since you did that, I mean, we can probably, last year's budget, I mean, we could probably swallow that.
That'd be a great benefit for them, I think. To eliminate that thousand dollars that the Ballbackers owe us. So it's like you're getting two thousand dollars, Cassie.
And by the way, let, let Blake know, he'll know, he'll just shake his head and say, oh, oh, I forgot.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, number sixteen, discussion, action, approval of recommendations for pool employees, did y'all read, you just got it tonight here?
I said you should have in your packet, uh, the minutes from the pool as well as the park. They just had their meeting yesterday, so it's right on the spot.
And then actually, do you wanna do?
You have to do them separate.
Just do sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, all separate.
Yes. So the recommendations were for Katie's, Katie Zickenby, pool manager, Brittany Waldau, assistant manager, full-time lifeguard Sophia McGregor, Alexa Meyer, Andrea Hasi, Abby Rafer, Kennedy Hammer, Jade Rickard, Rickard, and part-time guards Matt Christensen and Will Gunning.
Experience there that I've done before.
All of them, but the last two worked last year.
So that'd be your first motion, please do.
Okay. Well, I will make a motion for the approval, um, of the recommended pool employees.
Second?
Will second.
Second, myself, I, Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Number seventeen, discussion, action, approval of recommendations for pool employee wages, which was Katie Zickenby, twelve dollars an hour, Brittany Waldau, eleven dollars an hour, all returning lifeguards at nine seventy-five an hour, and the new lifeguards at nine dollars an hour.
I'll make a, um, I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, do the recommendation of the wages for the lifeguards.
Second? Uh, myself, I, Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Discussion, action, approval of recommendation for pool pass and daily entry fee rates. Which was family pass, a hundred dollars, individual fifty-five dollars. Uh, daily admission, ages four to twelve, two dollars, thirteen and up, three dollars, and party is seventy-five dollars an hour.
Do we know what those were last year?
Same.
They were the same, okay.
As Bob ready to answer that before you ask that, that's gonna say.
Can I ask, like, is other towns have a, a limit of what's considered your family? I mean, I, I'm not talking cousins or kids. Number of kids versus.
It just says, have, uh, they have in parentheses, has to be members living in the household.
Correct, I'm meaning.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
I have two kids and I pay a hundred, and the next family has ten kids and they're paying a hundred. Could there be magic number, five, six, whatever you want, guys wanted to be, then it's additional, just even twenty bucks? You know, or something like that to add, so, because I know the pool suffers on funding, it's not a money-making thing. Sometimes it's a babysitting course.
Yeah.
Um, I know you guys implemented a lot of rules last year, you must be X amount of years old before you can go there, hang out by yourself all day long. I'm just a suggestion.
That's a very good suggestion.
And I think that'd be something to take to them for next year, since we're already, Cassie, you know. Right there.
She's on pool board.
She's double dipping today.
Just, just for next year, because we're already at, you know, this point right now for this year. You guys have to go back to the pool board.
Biggest change that. People where they would be, oh, well, this is so-and-so, my stepkid or whatever, they're staying with me for three months, or it's my nephew, they're living with me for the summer. I mean, we're finally at the point where we've got crackdown on that, so that would be a nice next step. I think it's reasonable.
What, Courtney was just, we're just, you have, this is why we very carefully in each board meeting with them, have them make the motion as a recommendation, so that there's no misunderstanding, that they cannot set it without your approval. You can right now, change whatever you wish on the spot. Julie mentioned you might wanna just wait till next year, but if you don't, you can certainly, um, and I, and we talked about it, that you can up, down, all right, anything you want. So if there is a cutoff on, uh, you know, kids, if it's somebody five or less, five or more, that would be totally up to you.
I mean, you can leave it for them to discuss. Yeah, I think that they, that should be for them to decide.
That's, that's another, and you can have, maybe go into the maybe, possibly even look at that, um, if you wanted to just let this one go or table it.
When is your next meeting, Cassie?
Was it sixth or ninth?
Uh, I think it's the sixth.
It's a Thursday, isn't it?
It's the ninth, so then we need the.
I mean, probably is the average, maybe it's nothing to really discuss, maybe there's only four families out there that have more than five, I mean, I don't know, based on your family passes, if there's even a way to figure that out. Of how many total members.
What was it last year, Courtney, for family, ninety?
No, it's a family. It's a state.
And they.
They're putting a lot of improvements up there, I don't, I mean, you're putting, putting a pump in, you're putting innings in. You know, it's, I don't know.
Yeah, they need to get on the night, so they could bring it to the, your council meeting on the fourteenth, if you wanted them to change your family pass. They don't give enough time to advertise it then. Oh, wow.
What's projected date to open? Maybe.
Weather permitting.
Day after Thursday.
Well, and if we haven't increased the, the prices, we did last year.
That, it was twenty-five.
We did last year, okay, for the family, or for everything, okay, then let's not do that.
How much did they go up?
What was it, ten dollars on the season from ninety to a hundred, is that?
I think so, that's what I think mine was, yeah.
You can also do it next year, you, like I said, it's your flexibility.
Let's carry anybody.
Let's, let's table that for next month, maybe they can look to see how many families had three or more kids, or five or more kids, and.
Not just, just to clarify, not meaning just kids, because when you're talking family, you're talking husband, wife.
Right.
You know, just doesn't have to.
Or it's a single parent, or.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Number nineteen, discussion, action, approval of recommendation for seasonal park employees. Is it just the one there? For Eli Landham? I said it right. Lamb, lamb. Emphasis on the lamb.
We'll make a motion for the recommendation of the seasonal park employee.
Second?
I'll second.
Second, myself, I, Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And for the wages, ten dollars an hour.
Yeah, we increased that, uh, from what he was last year or so, and he's a, a good young man, I mean, uh, not because Darren's out here, because I wouldn't say that front of him, but he's a good young man anyway.
Well, he needs some proper training on roundup spray, control, so make sure that he receives training before they put a killing device in his hands.
I'll make a motion to bring the, to ten dollars an hour.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Second, myself, I, uh, Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Number twenty-one, discussion, action, contractor bids for community building business, which we don't have any bids. Number twenty-two, discussion, action on special designated liquor license, Keystone Bar, June seventh and eighth, from five thirty to two AM, Beer Garden. Pretty good, it was probably the same. We're gonna get it separated.
Um, you should do.
Separate, okay. On Friday, June seventh, from five thirty PM to two AM, it'd be on Maple Street between Locust and Le Caviar. From the two hundred block side. As per your map for this.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for June seventh for Keystone Bar, from five thirty PM to two AM.
Second?
Will second.
Second, myself, I, Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Um, same thing for the next day, on Saturday, the eighth, from five thirty PM to two AM.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for Keystone Bar, I mean, five thirty, PM to two AM.
I'll second.
Pam?
Aye.
Myself, I, Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Uh, Keystone Bar for license, Saturday, June eighth, from eight AM to five PM for the car show, which is kind of most of Locust, and then a little bit of Maple north towards like the social center.
Are those fences being there, Cassie?
No.
Well, and I think that's where.
That's the one where they have.
Let me, let me just kind of explain to the council, Bob, maybe remember from the past, one of the things you want to do, and you should do in a case of any kind of special designated liquor license, is one of the people you wanna bring up first, they used to always be in the forefront with the police. So I would have Bruce with his recommendation, I could also give a recommendation, and then maybe have Sherry explain changes, and, and, no matter what the liquor commission does, liquor commission's not liking this, I'm gonna tell you that right now. So it, it, I think it can work, and I think there are things you can do, but remember, they're not gonna step on the local governance or the municipalities' toes, they're only gonna grant what they see from the liquor commission. You have the ability, if Sherry wants it, to do whatever restrictions or constrictions that you want to, to make it happen, and I would say this is the kinda time that you take a good look at it. Make it happen, but make it happen on your dime and not the liquor commission's. They're gonna give you the loosest parameters they can. So, with that being said, I would go to your chief of police first.
Yeah, Bruce, do you have any comments?
Several years ago, the process you went through to get a special liquor license was law enforcement was contacted first, so that they knew what was going on. Ultimate wit and wisdom, the state of Nebraska took that away from us. And so now, I get notified if I keep in touch with the city clerk. The problems that we faced with the car show is they are getting big enough and spreading out far enough that you are stretching basically the whole length of Locust all the way from, from, uh, King Street here, all the way down to West Street. And then plus if they wanna start going north and south down the side streets. And it makes it a little tough to watch that whole area with the, the whole weekend of festivities going on. I have touched base with Sherry on this, she does hire her own private people to watch and to take care of things, they don't catch everything either. You have a, uh, liquor area, a lot of places you'll see, they'll give the bams, if you're old enough to drink, you wear a bams. Uh, you can get those through the distributors, they hand those out free, the little cheesy ones, if you wanna get the fancy ones, you gotta pay for them.
I pay for them now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I pay for them, they'll give you nothing anymore.
So, I guess, my thinking is, and kinda, I don't wanna go off of, my recommendation would be, if you have a beer garden set up for any on the seventh and eighth, or for the seventh and eighth, stick with the beer garden area and serve your alcohol out of there, and another reason behind that is some of these guys, they have these, these vehicles that they take to these car shows, they have a heck of a lot of money involved with them. And I would hate to get into a spat with somebody because you had some guy get a little too close to the car. And either he's laying a drink on it, spilling a drink on it, or getting too close because he's had too much to drink, and you know, then it comes back on the, the promoters on who's liable for the damage to vehicles and stuff. You know, 'cause some of those guys are, they're at that speed, you don't get within three foot of them, you know, so.
That's a great idea.
You know, I, I just think that would be a good recommendation.
Beer garden you already established.
I agree.
That makes sense.
And you just have to modify the application then?
Can we approve it, or does she have to bring it back next month? We can change it, she can change times on it as it's set to state.
One of the things with this, because it's in April, that's why we're doing this now, so.
That's what I saw, yeah.
To, to make sure that, you know, the, the, you're not waiting until the last second in this hurry, I've done that before too.
And just one, one last thing on it too, is that, you know, if, if, any type of violations that happen is gonna reflect, reflect upon Sherry's license, she's the one responsible for it.
Right.
So you know, you have, some duwaw wants to come down the alley with the cooler beer, cause he doesn't wanna buy her beer, then she's in violation, and she had nothing to do with it, for real, you know?
Yeah, I read that and I just cringed, I thought, how, this could not work.
Well, it, it did, and I, and I, I'm gonna stick up for Sherry a little bit, because I mean, it's nothing that she did. I think that it, it has worked and gotten by, but there is no natural, uh, when they look at, the liquor commission in their wisdom looked at some of these open areas and kinda left the fencing language out that they used to have, if it was a natural geographic entity, a park, uh, like, if you were gonna say Childress Park, it has defined edges, you know, anything goes off that, you know, that's why they didn't do the kinda got away from the fencing, but you really don't have that here other than streets. You know, so I mean, it's, it, they're okay, and they probably would pass it, but you have an obligation to protect not only the city, but also her, so.
I would go off of Bruce's recommendation and, um, just have it, the beer garden for that same day, and have her revise it, bring it back next month. Or can we, or can we?
Just change the.
You just can change your times, cause it's not on your one-four, the eighth.
It's defined on the five thirty.
You can go from eight AM to two AM if you want, turn out your.
Are you okay with that?
So just leave it be and then, but just change the time on it?
Yeah, you can come in, I'll help you.
Well, and then, and like I said.
Well, no, the June eighth, from eight to five, but have it within the beer garden.
Yeah. The parameters are.
So put the, instead of.
But I'm saying, it's just a half hour, so she just.
Change it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. You can just make it one, you can make it one license, because the problem if you make it two. Sure. You can't drink beer for half an hour, because your license is still over that. Sure, sure, no, okay. So you gotta kick your way out for half an hour and then come back. Right, no, I see what you're saying. So just like it from eight AM to five, or two AM for the beer garden, it's one license. Sure.
Are you all right with that, Sherry?
Yeah, I'm all right.
So you can just amend somebody's.
We're just gonna amend the time and we just leave it.
Yeah, before we send in, we'll just change your times on it and you'll be good to go.
So just eight AM to two AM, not the five to five thirty breaks, so.
So you'll, you'll, you'll be maybe all day.
Yep.
The beer garden is all day.
Just that half a block.
It's gonna be, yeah, like Bruce was talking, if I had to turn it up, down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Somebody want to amend that?
I will make a motion to amend the June eighth, um, recommendation, so it stays June eighth from eight AM to, um, two AM to June ninth. In the beer garden.
Second, uh, Pam?
Aye.
Myself, I, Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Chamber of Congress, barbecue, Saturday, June eighth, from five PM to eight PM, within the show park.
Right, and this is identical to the application from last year, and this goes back to some of that geographical, but you can also see the spot location where the, you know, go ahead.
So, Kurt had a suggestion, he thought that we should maybe extend it from five to nine, you think? I mean, I don't pay attention to what happens at the barbecue, I'm running around, it's a lot of beer, but are there people still lingering there?
We got cleanup crew, and you got everybody else that there, beer still flowing, so.
How does that work?
It's just gonna be an hour.
Is there any parameters?
Just that ban shell area, the, the natural, you can't go outside.
Where they had the barbecue at.
There's no fence up there.
Yeah, there's.
Personally, I'm not a fan of having beer at all, because I think you should remain a family, but I, I don't feel like we need beer at every event. That's just my opinion.
No, I kinda don't think you need it down there either, you gotta have it up here.
Yeah, I mean, there's no control over down there, it's no different than the car show, I mean.
Well, the chambers have it for the last three years, for them, it's a fundraiser, you know, they don't get a lot in memberships and other things, so they've been doing it. I guess my record since I took over Con Days go back to two thousand seventeen, and I got a liquor license example from then, and last year, so then they should ask me to fill it out. Again, for this year, so, um, I think it was pretty well received at the barbecue, but.
As I.
They don't need a lot of.
As I always say, I don't always get my way, or it's not my way to be. As I always say, I don't always get my way or it's not my way we had. So it's always a council way. Really, you have opinions.
We can deny that.
You can do whatever you want.
Might, might be good to have a couple of you come to the chamber meeting and come up with a plan to raise the other thousand dollars or something. There's gonna be quite a shortage already.
Going off what you're saying there, Bob, the liquor commission does not state you have to have the fence in an area like they used to, but they highly suggest it because then you have a controlled environment.
Yeah.
You know, and that's something the local governing body can, can state is that we want a fence in the area. And if you have a separate area from, you know, the families eating over here, if you wanna have a beer with your barbecue, you can do it over here, but that's where you're gonna be. And the idea of the time zones, that I understand, you have the cleanup crews there and people want to sit down and, and have a beer and stuff, but the timeframe is if you say eight o'clock, eight o'clock you're done. You shut it down, you don't sell another beer, it's just like the bars have to be shut down by two. She's gotta have everything cleared, you know? And you, you can stick to your guns on that one too. That's okay, eight o'clock, the coolers are pushed aside, they're done, we don't sell another beer and we have an enclosed area.
Could the chamber be able to set up snow fence or something like that to... Bruce is a shoulder president. Bruce. What's your opinion?
It's very hard to get volunteers to do anything, that's my general opinion. Now, the whole operation here is run by six people or something like that. No, it's not quite fair, right? Tends to be. But I would think a few steel posts and some type of fence or barrier to keep people in a certain area wouldn't be too tough if it wasn't made too big.
Yeah.
Come up with some yellow...
Or panels or something.
These are snow fences or something. Kinda just corral the people with, you know, wanna have beer, go in there. That would be too tough, kinda like beer garden downtown.
Well, but you put in tables too and, I mean, maybe make it big enough to put in tables in case...
We've already done that at their, at their rib desk a few times. I know they tie down an area with a fence and say, this is for you if you want a beer.
I think so.
Rather than all over the park.
Yeah, exactly.
So it is tilted.
That's doable.
That way they still get the proceeds for selling beer.
You know how to run a steel boat driver?
Yes, I do. Young age, if you need help, you give me a call. I can definitely do that for you.
When it's big?
That's...
Do you think nine o'clock is acceptable?
I think that makes sense 'cause it is hard to get everything shut down on the spot, I imagine, the...
I think that'd be, I, I would recommend it from my side of that...
I mean, ten, I mean, do you think nine is good or do you think we should go to ten or what do you...
Oh, it gets dark.
Think it's...
Nine o'clock is probably good.
Okay.
Clean up, which kinda gets cleared out.
So do we need a...
Do we have to amend that to be a certain section or how?
You don't have to amend it. You, this one, you can just pass what you want to pass and they will, like, turn it in the liquor commission at...
Or say to, you know, limit it to a one hundred by one hundred and fifty foot area or something like that.
And let the tailor decide, yeah.
Sensible and they can get a spot. People would wanna run the thing. I would think something like that. What do you think, Susan? Hundred by a hundred and fifty?
I don't drink beer at all, well, the parameter, size, um...
Well, therein lies the problem.
I think that would be...
I was designated to allow...
Yeah, we're, we're, we get some people in there and do enough parties in there that say, feel less full of people and tell you, you want a beer, that's a lot.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Chamber of Commerce, um, special designated, um, license permit for June eighth from five PM to nine PM with a recommendation of a beer garden of, um, a hundred feet by a hundred and fifty feet.
Second?
I'll second. It's a pretty big area.
Okay, Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Myself, I, Pam?
Aye.
Administrators reporting.
I don't know if anything is in particular. It's been an interesting month. I also concur. One of the things that I really admire about the staff, and I don't have to tell you, is they're very good. We meet every morning, every day. Kurt and I go through, it's, the month of March has been a very interesting month to, to begin with, and I, I applaud them for everything they did. We made, uh, we did have Brian come in and, um, as well as Darren to make a strategic plan on how to handle. We have roads, as you know, that are just not gonna be fixed, no matter, and I, and I speak to you because you will speak to citizens, um, and those citizens are gonna say, when? Some of these roads are on a mapping plan that we've got figured out to take one at a time. We can't just go to all the dirt roads and do them at once because it's not gonna happen. You see what Woodland's like? That might be the, the whole month.
Yeah, I was asked about Woodland, um, just because of the, the buses.
And that's probably the biggest reason.
So I didn't know what...
The only thing for George is, is that that is probably the primary reason why we'll take the longest. And I'm not being controversial or, uh, con- confrontational, but I couldn't care less about the buses coming down that road when they have paved roads that they need to use 'cause that road is destroyed.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you're right, I know, and I've heard it too.
Nobody lives on that. I mean, everybody that...
Yeah.
Does live there has got access, so it's not like...
That's where your ditch is. If you looked at where we had, Dave Frederick come in and actually dig those ditches down because those culverts, part of the problem we had on the thirteenth, um, is we have streets through time and nobody's at fault. We try to work the best we can. If you go down to Lion Street, we discovered hidden culverts, private culverts, uh, that just naturally were covered over your road and your ditches are the same level and that should never be. If we wanna do it and do it right, going back to the article like what Josh Mooney said in, in the North Fork, why go back and fix these roads to just temporarily put a band-aid, let's go ahead and fix them right? And that means a lot of these homeowners are gonna probably come to you because they're gonna see a lot of their yards disappear. And they've, they've naturally encroached on streets because, and they mow them and they do a new job and that, but you know what I mean?
Mow the kind of the ditch up after the road, you know?
And so eventually that's gotta be pushed back to its natural, um, platting to sit there and allow some of the...
You gotta get a draw line in there somewhere, yeah.
So do you have it broken out that people call and can say, you know what, the city has the list of prioritized streets?
Yes, I mean, we can look at that. We, we, we're still working on some of them, which ones should be approached, but we've already talked about whether, we're gonna stay on the north side and you're gonna see Woodland is gonna be one of the ones we tackle, but it's a long, it's gonna be a longer...
School will be out by the time.
This way is not gonna help.
And I, and I do know, but like I said, when I see the, the bus barn, they need to basically, that's the, the beauty of having that paving on nine, that may be a little bit more out, but use what you've got.
Sure.
Because the second thing that I look at on some of these, uh, roads over the years, and I understand where they're coming from, but the real simple solution on some of these gap paving is just do that and say, why are we messing around and not doing more gap paving, which we do not have to ask some of them, we just don't wanna put the hardship on the people that are there.
Right, right.
And so I don't wanna do that. Fourth Street, uh, and not to digress and not get off my, um, here, but Fourth Street's already a paving district. That's not gonna go away. I mean, if we wanted to go back and redo that or look at how we wanna go forward, uh, it's not like we have to go back to the table and have all these hearings. It's the one who's already passed as a district. It stays there. So Fourth Street might have to be approached in the future if we wanna have so many progression, but that's besides the point. Let's worry about the flooding. So you got Fifth, you got Seventh, you got Plum, you're gonna have Woodland, you're gonna have to go down south to Line, and you're gonna have to go down on Congress where Jerry's at. That road has actually disappeared. I've never, I'm not that, I'm not a native, I've only been here twenty years. I have never seen roads, and you probably know this in the country, but I've never seen the road disappear. This road, uh, basically has come up the, um, water table from underneath, the water from above, and it is gone, you know, so.
You know, you get to go big enough project, there you may actually have a, a contract project. I mean, you're gonna take up the whole summer for the city crew working on the road top.
And, and we did discuss, and we are gonna be, I believe, I've stayed firm and fast that I believe in the system and the system will work. It's let me down a few times, but NEMA and FEMA, and we are documenting and organizing all the labor, everything that we're doing, and that road construction is gonna probably be a big portion of what we turn in.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know if there's anything else that you wanna hit me on, just like I said, a lot of good things. The audit, I, I gotta tell you, I was very pleased when I got it from the beginning. And, and there's no other way to say it, that it, it's always what I thought, it's never changed, except this auditor, and he's right, we're trying to flip things around and we're getting there. It's a slow process, but, um, he's running into, uh, other towns that he's now seeing where their general fund is completely upside down too because that's just the way Palmer did it. And he didn't seem to think that was a problem. And I tend to agree with Kyle, it's a problem, you know? We don't have a lot of money and if you didn't take anything from that distribution and analysis as you go back and as we get ready for the budget season, um, the water is definitely something that needs to be, we, we are very low and before we do anything, I'll bring you the rates from all the other towns, 'cause we'll have a rural water study probably done here in the next month or so, that they do it for free. And, but you will see that we are by far, um, one of the cheaper on the water.
Oh, the night that, the meeting was supposed to happen was the night of the flood, the fourteenth, so did that get postponed then or?
Which meeting?
That Elkhorn or the lower?
No, uh, in the, I, I, let me, let me wrap it up. Like I said, it was eight o'clock, I thought we were gonna get done, so I don't wanna go too much later, but I do wanna let you know, I signed the documents today for the Handy Van renewal from nineteen through twenty-one. It's approximately fifty thou, a little less, maybe forty thousand dollars between federal and state. They, they've already approved their end of it. I just had to sign it as the administrator, it goes back in, and then we will be locked in for two years, which is a good thing. We don't have to worry about that. So that was nice. The, what you're talking about is the Lower Elkhorn absolutely loved everything that we're gonna do with that wellhead protection grant and that seventy-seven thousand. They have offered up, um, thirty-five hundred plus two thousand extra dollars to throw into it as long as we're doing our portion. So we ended up submitting the grant today for, um, with twenty-three percent match, which makes it look very, very good and for us to go forward with it. So that was two major accomplishments to, to get done today.
Good deal.
And then the, besides that, it'd be, what little I can tell is the office, um, you obviously seeing Melissa's no longer, she decided to finally have that little child.
Yeah.
Uh, Jan is doing a remarkable job. We didn't have any doubts that she would.
Mm-hmm.
Um, she stays right on top of it and Courtney's been tremendous. Like I said, if it's a rah rah society, I'm gonna tell you that I cheerlead for the staff and stability means a lot to me in, when it comes to the city or any board or anywhere. And having things stable is probably the best thing on your time at the council, um, and I like it. I like where we're at right now, so.
Good.
Twenty-three, send the attorney comments.
I don't have anything else we can accomplish. I guess this ordinance on vacant property took up more time today than I told. I haven't become the attorney at all, um, went even a move on the Steintrauss house. I still think we wanna push him before we go to spend any money or effort on that mess. But, uh, we'll, we'll have time to catch up with that next month now, if we ever get past the fifteenth of April.
It's coming pretty soon. Twenty-four, council comments.
Well, Rob, for you, just let me just do one thing that, and it's, it, I think it's important for you to know is that, um, also during the month of March, it was a very difficult, um, decision, but we worked very well in a cooperative environment with Pierce County. And a lot of that happened through the Pierce County Economic Development Organization that this, uh, city was a founder on. We did have a gentleman, Joe Groff, that was a, and that tended to be a problem. Very good friend of mine, very good friend of a lot of people. We had to let him go. And it was very difficult, but we felt that the organization needed to go in a different direction. Since that time, it has, and we're trying to work out an arrangement how that's gonna look because Pierce County, um, just through this organization has been able to, I work with Osmond and Pierce very closely. We need something, they'll send it. We, I send them things if they need it. And they're constantly, Chad was on the phone, uh, probably every two to three hours on the day of the flooding down in Pierce. Wasn't much I could do, we had our own problems, but I offered any trucks, any assistance we could. Obviously, that wasn't gonna happen once we saw what happened then, so. I just wanted to let you know because you're gonna get probably, uh, LB eight forty, we'll probably get that, or this, uh, CDA will get that, um, renewal of membership fee. We are part of the PCED, it's like three dollars per every person in population, but for three thousand dollars, we contribute, the county puts in twenty-two thousand into it every year and it, between the people on the, and Hader included, it's a good organization and I think we got some good things. They just paid for the, um, um, GA, Gazelle, and they all paid for, between the city and the PCED, the housing study that's helping Susan to work with us to get that grant in. It had to be done with a housing study. So PCED, in my mind, has value and I think it needs to go further, but you would need to have that input with it too, so.